Okay. Agenda item 1.1 that the Council of the Town of Kindersley, having established plan, resolves to call the March 23, 2020, regular meeting of council at 5:03 PM. Could I have a mover and a seconder, please? Please. Call in favor? Carrie. Thank you very much. Just before we start the regular portion of our meeting, I'd like to say a few words. I think our whole world, our country, our province, probably our town is in a crisis situation. I think it's time for cool heads and smart decisions to be made regarding the social distancing that is the law and must be the law, the self-isolation for the people who have been so instructed. It is hugely important that we get this under control. I think also a great thank you to so many people, I'm going to miss somebody here, but our healthcare workers have put themselves in danger every day throughout this country, our grocery stores that we need to feed our people, our restaurants who have come up with a lot of unique ideas to serve the public without putting anybody in danger. Certainly, our employees here at the town, and I will be touching on that a little, this province has been excellent. Frigga Moe has called it as he sees it. He hasn't been indecisive in the least. So, I will speak a little bit as to what we have done here at the Town of Kindersley. On the 16th of March, we had a meeting and decided at that time that we would shut down the West Central Events Center, the Aquatic Center, Norm Ritchie, and the Alx Hall, and that happened immediately. We fortunately needed to shut down the pool at some point this spring in order to do servicing, so that is in process right now. The rink, basically the same thing, there's lots of maintenance work that has to be done, so the one ice surface is already out and maintenance has started on that, and the next is in limbo, but not for long. On the 18th, we issued a press release as well as an HR policy, and basically we locked our doors to the town office here so that we can allow our employees to work if they so choose. Fortunately, there's not a whole bunch of people around this office, so I think if we counted, everybody could have their own office, and if I come in, I can have the whole council chamber. So, we are doing the distancing. For the most part, it's been business as usual. We published in our memorandum that Anna has been flashing to you through all our social media outlets, the numbers, if there are any emergencies, both my number and CIO Audrey's numbers are there, as well as the town numbers. So, we are today, as you can see, holding our regular council meeting. It looks a little disjointed because we're spread out as much as we can to meet the current policies in place. We do have the ability to meet electronically, but made the decision to meet in person today. We do have some things that we have to deal with. Other than that, there are websites that will give you a lot of information on the coronavirus and the various things that you are required to be doing. You can go to www.saskatchewan.ca or go to www.kindersley.ca. They both will have all the press releases and stuff that you need to govern your authorities. I will say that I have been out on a limited basis this weekend, weekend, and I am so impressed with what I've been seeing with the citizens of Kindersley. The people who are talking on the sidewalk are eight feet apart. Many of the businesses, some have closed their doors. Others are, you know, having signs in grocery stores with one person at the tailroom, and they've been taking all the precautions and probably more, and I think that is so important because we need to beat this, and the only way you're going to do it is the advice that we're getting from healthcare professionals on a daily basis on pretty well every TV channel you touch. So, if we keep doing that, let's be safe, let's make all the right choices, and let's make sure that our community doesn't become one of the statistics. Thank you for that, and we'll carry on with the regular meeting now. I would call for the removal of any items from the consent agenda that you wanted added to the regular agenda. I don't think there was only two items on the consent agenda, and one of them is on the regular agenda already. Therefore, I move on to Agenda Item 2.2, that the Council of the Town of Kindersley resolves to adopt the agenda for the March 23, 2020, regular meeting of council as presented, and that a copy of this agenda be attached to inform part of the minutes of this meeting. Could I have a mover and a seconder for that? Rob and Leece. Call in favor? Carrie, thank you. As part of the meeting is a conflict of interest declaration. I do have one from Council Baker, who is not here tonight, who has declared a conflict of interest on the Kinsman Park Shack Building Project. And that would basically take care of that. He's not here tonight. Agenda Item 4.1, that the Council of the Town of Kindersley resolves that whereas by the time being 5:11 PM, that the regular meeting of council be adjourned to a confidential in-camera meeting. A mover and a seconder for that, please. Rob.
... bylaw. Anyways, that's since been rescinded, but basically, so the break was on the service line. The town didn't charge out any cost for labor, didn't charge out any cost for parts, replacement of the valve, that kind of thing. Our new bylaw, when it's on the service connection, it is the property owner's responsibility. Obviously, we want the ability to turn water on and off, so the valves are our responsibility, but the line itself is theirs. So, with that mindset just prepared, that is falling to our new bylaw, we felt fair to, we felt that it was fair at the time to only invoice the hydroback expense, and we were willing to waive all the interest on the bill. The only thing that was invoiced was hydroback, so none of the equipment, that kind of thing, labor, town workers, the parts themselves, none of that was invoiced for the repair. So, we felt that we were being more than fair, not even invoicing like half of what that repair was. This line does feed that private property and doesn't feed any of the residents in Kindersley. So, that was the mindset there. If you're requesting that it be fully waived to council, then you can make your request at this time, and then council can decide whether they want to waive the entire invoice or if they want it to stop.
Okay. I was going to say, like, even if there was an agreement written up or whatever, to me, like, from all the work that I've done for the Town of Kindersley, and I know stuff I've written up for invoices to get billed to customers or residents or whatever up Kindersley, I know that they always have a definite line and have a shut-off at the valve on the property line. The building's been standard practice all year that I've worked for Kindersley, so this is, to me, this is, I don't know, even following those times that I've been talking about that I've worked for the Town of Kindersley. So, I, even with the new, I mean, I still say it goes back to standard practice, which generally, when you, when you have to check the new area or put new services in, usually found to be a vulnerable option in the property line, fewer and larger services and everything. Anyway, I'm sure there's one of your chief, um, I have a lot of confusion here with some stuff about the tariffs, um, that were implemented here at Kindersley, um, three, four, five, six, um, um, I guess the, the, I don't know.
So, they're kind of losing weight, Will. Are you speaking into the phone there, directing Smapple?
Yeah.
That's better, that's better.
Okay. And so, with these tariffs or whatever, I understand there, you know, tariffs in other areas, I've did some research, whatever, in the town and stuff like that, and they've increased there to ease them out, and like, if you have, that there's no clarification, I guess, on administration, that when someone calls above, you know, what these tariffs going for, and all they tell them is that it's going for infrastructure, road repair, there's this and that, and they need to explain to people when they call that it is for, in general, like, for parks and recreation, and in general, people using the roads in town and stuff like that, because we know whatever the Purry Brothers pays for any repairs on their property for a road, infrastructure, anything like that that goes on in the park, Purry Brothers pays for that and has that fixed themselves. But, that when people call, tell them, like, they tell them, they, like, well, it's for road repair or for sidewalk and whatever, and it's like, yeah, it is, but not for in the park, it's for other areas in town that, you know, that we use or people in public use in general. So, I wish they would clarify that to tenants, so that tenants can all, that be handled, you know, you're not, you know, we're not getting these services or whatever, you know, whatever, and they ever, we're giving tariffs, ice up or whatever, and nobody explaining it properly, so.
Well, we can certainly have the girls type up or not type up, but we could even include in our billing there that here's what it's for and.
Yeah, we could do a flyer for the next billing.
Yeah.
You know, would be appreciated.
Feel like we had done that, but we do it again.
But, all for the.
I thought we did. Didn't we?
Um, they did a simple, you know, explanation to what they're for. Um, we understand, and, you know, we understand that we're responsible for repairing inside the park, and there again, I believe the Town of Kindersley is responsible for the repairs outside the property line, and that's where this water leak, um, comes from. And I know that because when we cut the water, during that water leak, we have no water in the park, or the water leak, which we don't, um, leak, and so we know that the water leak was just from that, was outside of the park, because the valves aren't on the property line. But, anyway, um, I mean, I think.
Well, we will follow your second request there by putting a mailer in the next set of bills that go up.
Which I do believe, well, this is Audrey speaking, we have done a flyer, now whether people choose to pull it out of their bill when they get it is, I guess, up to them, but we will do it again and explain exactly, we can even just include the one that we have done up previously, and send it with the next billing.
Will.
Yeah. Sure, help a lot.
Yeah.
As you understand the property and everything.
Will, Deputy Irvine here, what do you, what's the average cost for your land rental in there to the owners of that park per year?
Two fifty, more than one a month.
Two fifty a month?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, that's three grand a year. What do they, what do they do with that money? Do they, like, is that for road repair and whatnot?
Yeah, all the repairs that we do inside the park.
They get hurt, they're just.
They cover all that skating, and then we also pass both of those, we have, we can allow different years, whatever, and that, in other words, we need to have a year payment because, um, you know, we made that area empty, and so it was payable, and then we paid, we paid for paving, and, but technically, it's not property as well, like, on the actual road that's out there. And came with the other one, we also pay for it, and we charge the town anything for paving, so, um, but.
The reason I asked is I drove through there last week, and I noticed how poor the pavement was in there. I mean, there's places in there. Do the tenants complain to the owners about the condition of the roads are there, because it's not particularly good for $3,000 a year?
There's a lot of company, firms did or whatever, and that, you know, they've also had their bill or whatever, but, you know.
Right.
Yeah. We do even tell them.
Yeah.
Um, I know, you, um, they have some stuff, some are already open, and you can tell them, whatever, and forth, and, and so the water's out there, and, yeah, it happens or whatever, and we fix, you know, with, you know, the water enough or whatever, we get, we, we pack, you know, we pack everything, whatever that we can, so.
Right.
And, and I believe that they are saving for, we're saving the whole, our.
Right. So, the combination of the fees and then the town taxes is about $4,500 a person now?
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A third, yeah, a third to the town.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
No, I just wondered, I didn't know what water rent would be in a place like that, or if it's comparable to golf, you, I just, I just noticed it was, it was pretty rough in there when I drove through, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not, whatever, and, I mean, it's not, after we have a payment, just every given payment.
Right.
And, you know, I travel, and maybe it was the other two parks, I think, you know, I mean, one part I think people work on here, straight now, I don't know if you hear, but I don't think they're paid that, or whatever, I don't know, it's not, you know, but.
Right.
I guess that's everything too, Randy, is the amount of trailer park, such a small area, actually rates you, uh, you know, we're, roughly seventy tenants we have in the park now, um, you know, if you have a statue, I have almost a tenant per month, and you have one up per year, that's pretty good money from a small, throughout this small area, um, that is paid to the town, and, and then to receive a bill on top of it for, for, you know, a repair that was done, um, for the, I mean, a repair done maybe once every ten, twenty, thirty years, and just, it seems kind of, like, and we have to say it's too kind of like a money trap, and it doesn't really sit well with, with people, um, you know, they have to pay on top of that amount of money per year, or that there has to be more money to talk. Some people, you know, after receiving that kind of money, that doesn't go directly back to the park.
To me, well, that should go to the owners, it shouldn't have anything to do with the tenants, it's part of regular repair and maintenance.
Yeah.
But it's not, it has nothing to do with the individuals. I mean, it's a water service for everybody, but it's a water service for that trailer park.
Yeah. No, that's correct. I'm just saying that the money, the taxes that are coming from the trailer park towards the town, if you add that up into ten, take ten, fifteen, twenty years, that amount of money that doesn't directly go back into our infrastructure, because Purry Brothers pays for their own, um, road repair, and infrastructure repair, all that money, um, goes to the town, and, and, and it doesn't get back to the park itself directly, and then when the water leak hit outside of the, you know, on the walk on your feet above, and then where the parking lot, it pays for it, who says, it seems like it, it seems.
Well, I guess with my, my one response to, we spent on the, close to $10 million on a swimming pool and a fire hall this, in 2019, which your people have the same right to use as I have.
Right.
We got to pay for this stuff somehow. It doesn't get put out of the sky.
No, okay, no problem, yeah, no problem, yeah, yeah, but everything is legit, where the money goes and that stuff, that's perfectly legitimate.
Yeah.
It's just the issue of clarification of jurisdiction, where the town's responsible in paying the parking fund, and that's why we're having issues, that we're not getting it cleared, um, you know, we, we actually, like, would be your side, and I'll say that I need to, again, um, you know, a lot of this, a lot of that, and maybe we need to basically, at that time, just put the cost out of the zone, and for some reason, it's not being acknowledged at the repair, in the repair of the website that's out, outside the park, and not out of the zone, and we need to, we need to try, that we need to pay, to be accountable for, for the definite jurisdiction, we're doing our duty, and so it is, that hasn't made any difference.
So, one good thing that we do have, Will, is we do have a brand-new water sewer bylaw that is very clear. Uh, it's written now that, um, all the plumbers, like, in town, they have it, uh, it's on our website. Uh, it's very clear, which clearly states what the property owner's responsible for and what the Town of Kindersley is responsible for. Uh, so, going forward, we're going to be tying, um, basically, everything into that because everybody needs to be equal and fair, and so that's, um, that's what we have going forward from whenever that bylaw is passed, and that's what we'll be following.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions of Will, Council?
Well, I, you know, there's going to be a request out of the line, is that, that people trying to find the property signs everywhere, but, and I don't think it really affects you anything, um, I'm sorry, to you, I, we're in the first department, I mean, nobody, everybody here, you're down in front of the, I don't think you're going to walk in front of a guy, or something, um, I think that's just my, I think it's.
I didn't, well, I wasn't aware there was a problem with them.
These signs are at the entrance of every trailer park, just because they're, they're not blocked out like how, um, like the residential areas are or whatever, and it did stop a lot of, like, we're getting a lot of phone calls, you know, like, about the roads in that area or whatever, and so then people know that this is a longer, the Town of Kindersley property is jurisdiction.
Jurisdiction, yeah.
It's private, basically, just like if you were in a owner's parking lot.
Will, I just have a question for you, and I'm not sure I'm speaking out of term here, but I, as I understand, that there's three water accesses into that trailer park when technically the town only really has to give you one, would you like, would you like to see, or would you like to check with the owners to see if they would like that reduced to one, so that there's two-thirds less chance any problems with, with that in the future? I understand that it's actually to the park's benefit to have to because the way the water circulates through the park, have you got an opinion on that, being that you have a background in that?
Yeah, um, you know, I mean, I agree that now that the way the park is developed, and actually, um, I'm getting in where, um, I mean, I'm, I'm known from working with the town, we purposely continue trying to reach out so that we wouldn't have situation between the water areas, so we didn't want to start with water. But it also, look, you work down where our, where I'm in, on the touch, and then we roll to the, the, the touch, um, they kind of figure that the town, they ignore, they actually don't, in town, that there's other two homes that were built there, that, you know, for things, and, um, that they're there to ignore, kind of, some days, um, that water two days, um, two parts, and actually, kind of, two of our green area, the, um, when the original, where the original home, the location was, two parts, um, they certainly say, in the, in the, um, situation for, for the area of the town, so it really would be done, that, and the government, the, the park, I mean, so, I think it would be a good, a good.
Right. Okay, just, just one to ask.
Okay, we will, uh, the other part, I guess, of this agreement, are we going to look at updating it from twenty, or from 1975?
Yeah, we did start that once, and it just got.
I think we'll, we'll look at that, I mean, it may not change, but at least it might be a little more, this one's been through a few photocopies, and it's.
Who did find all the pages on the schedule, I'm afraid.
We get all the schedules, we'll get it redone and so that it looks a little better, hopefully, and maybe we can clarify some of this stuff in it, too.
It will just tie to our, like, it's part of our.
It'll tie to our bylaw then and.
Just like the traffic violation numbers will be.
Okay.
Really, one last thing I have to, um, before, um, you know, to, uh, give you up, with the, the fire, and so, a lot of the water that's through, means becomes community inside of the upper areas, and, that's one state where, wherever, they don't have that, and it's just, and doing, and, 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 it's like the point of, is that, if the fire is dealt out of the water, that's purely the end, and, if, if, you know, if you feel, how many, there's a little, it's kind of cruel to, to put water, to be allowed in, to pour water, to use on, um, and, specifically, if one, or maybe if there's a, that, I don't know, like, a lot of that, that's, 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 that it even, you know, they would think, kind of, not full, two, at the time, so, and, and, that, 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 that requires, kind of, town, another, natural areas, that's, 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 that is what it was. But, um, I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm.
There was an amendment to that clause three that you're quoting there in section F, uh, and I think that removed that whole number three, it says, would request that be deleted from the area three, the clause two, C.
I think that was the topic that was taken to you today.
Yeah.
Will?
There's a letter there that dated September the ninth.
Yeah, I, I read that as well, Rod, and, and that had more to do with the streets, um, maintenance and stuff like that, but, you know, we're not arguing that, we.
Okay.
Um, we, we fully understand the responsibility of repairing, paying for our own infrastructure here in the park, this is just an issue of the jurisdiction of this particular repair.
Okay. Well, I haven't, don't see further questions from Council, so we will take your request under consideration, Will. We will deal with the, the mail-out, and we will probably move to get a little more up-to-date agreement in place with you in the next short while.
Okay, so, will I be notified any further?
Yes, you will. Yes, you will.
Okay.
All right.
All right, well, I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to Agenda Item 8.1, that the Council of the Town of Kindersley resolves to approve the discretionary use permit for daycare at the residence of 18 Thompson Drive, and that this permit can be, will be granted on the conditions of the daycare. Firstly, it can provide care for up to more than eight children, complies with the development standards pursuant to Section 4, sub 11, 3, 1 to 9, in the town zoning by law 0414. The proposed site is inspected by the town-appointed building official prior to operation of the business. Owner is responsible to obtain appropriate licensing and meet provincial regulations for childcare as per the Childcare Act of 2015, and that if the daycare violates any of these conditions, then the permit may be revoked. Kim, did you have any comment on that?
Um, so, this applicant, um, actually had a discretionary use in their past property. They've just currently changed properties, and so they're looking at getting a permit to run their existing business at a new location. Uh, we did send out notices to the Centennial Area Radius to homes in that area.